Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for the City of Tacoma Council District 3 Candidate Forum. I'm Amanda Dishazo. I'm the Executive Director of the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. We do advocacy and education to promote the development of affordable housing across Pierce County. And we're hosting this forum in partnership with the League of Women Voters today. We have curated some questions around affordable housing and homelessness that will be asking the candidates. And I'm excited to get started, so I will hand it over to Liz Knox, who will be moderating. Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, I welcome the candidates and audience to this community candidate forum for the Tacoma City Council Position 3. I'm Liz Knox, moderator from the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 103 years has been to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. We conduct candidate forums to provide voters with information on which to base their votes. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish people, surrounded by their traditional waters. In the shadow of Mount Tacoma, we actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. This forum is for the general election, which is November 7. With us at this forum in ballot order are the candidates Jamaica Scott and Chris Van Vekton. Ground rules have been sent in advance to the candidates. Candidates, you each agree to follow the ground rules, including agreeing to those regarding any recording of this forum and to speak only to the issues, not about each other. Please indicate your agreement to all ground rules with a nod or a thumbs up. Thank you. Questions for tonight have been prepared by the members of the Affordable Housing Consortium and the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. Candidates will be given 90 seconds to answer. Our timekeeper is Susan Idenschink. She will hold up cards when there are 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when it is time to stop. When you see the last card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see the timekeeper and the moderator. Also, please mute yourself when it is not your turn to speak. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. These will be given in ballot order. After that, the order of answering questions will rotate. Each candidate will get the same amount of time to answer in every case. At the end, closing statements may be up to one minute and will be given in reverse order of the opening statements. The order of the opening two-minute statements in ballot order, and we will begin with Jamaica Scott.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Jamaica Scott. I'm running for Tacoma City Council Position 3. I am a lifelong Tacoma resident. I grew up in District 3 and it's where I currently live. I grew up in the Hilltop area and I now live in central Tacoma. I am just somebody who loves the city and I grew up fortunate enough to be surrounded by a community of people who, when we were faced with a system that was supposed to supporting us, letting us down, instead of, you know, being too down and out about it, we rallied together and we filled in those gaps where they were missing and we really showed up for each other. And that's where I learned, you know, the importance of community, the importance of being an active community member, and what it takes as far as when you are pursuing your own personal interests. The responsibility we each hold to put something into the pot of keeping this community fed, in a sense. So I'm just looking to, you know, address a lot of our really pressing issues. We're facing an affordability issue, homelessness issue. We're facing a lot of issues of safety and community wellness and looking for various ways in which we can help our community get the resources we need and start to see ourselves thrive in the way that we all know that we can. So I'm looking forward to taking the work that I have done in the community, whether it be working with youth and families or as a community organizer with the Tacoma Action Collective and continuing to work to advocate for the community and being a megaphone for the people and bringing their voices with me behind the dais. And I'm looking forward to doing that on the city council. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now, Chris Van Vekton, your opening statement.
Well, hello there. My name is Chris Van Vekton. I'm running for Tacoma City Council because I believe in the city of destiny and I believe it can do better. I spent most of my life in Tacoma. This is where I went to college. It's where I got my first full-time job, which was stuck in shells at Target on Union. It's where a local civil rights legend named Dennis Flanagan took a chance on me, gave me a job on his legislative staff the year we passed the very first LGBT protections in Washington state history. It's where my wife Jen and I had our first date, where we subsequently bought a home in Hilltop, about six blocks from the jail, and where we're raising a seven-year-old named Serena, who's already decided this is where she wants to spend the rest of her life. I want to make sure that's a life worth living in Tacoma. But Tacoma is also a place where at various times in history, I've had to struggle. My orientation to adulthood was the Great Recession of 2008. And like much of my generation, I bounced around between temp jobs and unpaid internships and doing all sorts of stuff, just hoping that, you know, one day someone would decide I was worth giving a living wage job to. And eventually I just gave up and went to law school, taking on more student loan debt. And after I graduated, I started a law practice here in Tacoma, which is dedicated primarily to criminal defense. I've had a public defender contract for the past 10 years. Before that, I was a prosecutor, Rule 9 prosecutor, for two years, first with the city of Lakewood and, I'm sorry, first with Thurston County and then with the city of Lakewood. And during law school, I worked with the Northwest Justice Project's Mortgage Proclusion Mediation Program. Shortly after law school, I was involved in representing tenants through the eviction process. I myself experienced an eviction 15 years ago through a long story that I won't share in this forum. I have served on the Tacoma Community Redevelopment Authority, which is involved in providing assistance to a host of individuals who are in need of housing help. I am currently a homeowner and a tenant. I rent this office space right here. I also am a property manager through my law office. I have a very broad base of experience on these issues. And I believe that the way we are going to see real progress in our communities when people with that frontline experience get involved. And so that's why I'm running for Tacoma City Council in District 3.
Thank you. And now we come to the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. The first question will begin with Jamaica Scott. And here's the question. According to the National Low-Income Housing Coalition, a person earning the minimum wage would need to work 80 hours per week to afford a two-bedroom rental at fair market rent in Tacoma. How do you plan to address the affordable housing crisis in our city? And what specific policies will you advocate to ensure housing affordability?
I, so I think we have a lot of various ways that we need to be addressing this issue. And so one of those things is, you know, continue to look at, we've already identified that more housing units is part of the issue. And so how do we continue to streamline that? How do we make sure that we're on track to hit our goals for what we need? And also looking at that, knowing that all of those houses won't be built tomorrow. So trying to figure out a way that even within that process, as we're looking to build, making sure that we're building for accountability and for equity and making sure that we are building out and approving projects that are in line with our priorities as a community, which should be to get people housed and stable housing. So also looking at ways, as far as policies, right now we have Proposition 1, that's going to be on our, Measure 1, that's going to be on the ballot about our tenants, right? So I think looking at more protections and making sure that we're mitigating things right now, it's really hard for, or sorry, it's really easy for people to end up homeless. And so finding ways that we can make that process a little harder. We want to make it more, more resources available for folks. I think that we should continue to look into expanding out our guaranteed income program. As so many people are rent burdened, I think that that's going to be a way that we can kind of combat, you know, a lot of these housing costs as we're working to adjust the market for everybody.
Thank you. And now, Chris Van Vekton, the same question.
Yeah, I think it comes down to strengthening rent and residential use regulations. I think there aren't enough guardrails on the cost of housing. I do believe that housing needs to be profitable for a home providers, housing providers, to get housing built and to get people in the business of being landlords. But at the end of the day, if you can't afford a conscience, you shouldn't be in this industry. So I do think that we need to take a look at establishing some guardrails with regard to housing. We regulate interest rates, we regulate oil prices. We don't do much to regulate the cost of housing. I do think that we need to secure more funding for low-income housing and explore new affordable housing models like the co-op model, a social housing format. I think we need to work to convert more of our renters into homeowners. You can see the affordability crisis disproportionately always hits renters harder than it hits homeowners. And in particular, I'd like to focus on those populations that have a measurable disparity in homeownership from the general public. As a criminal defense attorney, I work with these populations. And I think that, you know, no matter what, you know, they may do to, you know, turn their life around or what they achieve, generally speaking, they don't come from generational wealth. One of the things I was very proud to work with on the TCRA, Tacoma Community Redevelopment Authority, was down payment assistance for individuals. But the number of people who have been receiving assistance through the city to make a down payment on a home has been in decline. We need to promote smart and sensitive growth in our zoning laws and building regulations to increase density. We need to, I think, work to build more jobs in Tacoma that make it possible for people to live here. You know, rental regulations and stuff of that nature are important. But at the end of the day, what we want to really do is increase the personal wealth of our community. And that in itself will do a lot to make housing affordable. One idea that I've been pitching on the campaign trail is this, there's a lot of low-income homeowners. Am I out of time? I'm seeing Liz signaling something here. Liz, I can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. Can you see the timekeeper?
No, I cannot.
Are you in gallery view?
I have no idea.
If in your view...
Oh, I see. Oh, I see. I apologize. Yes.
There you go. Okay, there you go. So, and Chris Van Vekton, you'll be first on the next question, which is, how do you see the conditions and solutions for homelessness different in District 3 than other parts of the city?
Different in our district? Well, you know, we are more centralized with, we are the central district. So a lot of services are tied to this district here. You know, there are a lot of people in other parts of the city that are more affluent who feel that their contribution to this crisis is that they pay more in property tax. And so by paying more in property tax, they're doing a disproportionate amount to turn this around. Whereas we, I believe, have a disproportionate percentage of people who are struggling with this and a disproportionate concentration of people who are experiencing this. You know, as a criminal defense attorney, a lot of the people I represent, they have a home, but they're not allowed to go home because home is where the crime took place, like in the domestic violence context. And so no one's, you know, no one's ever going to rent to you if you have a pending criminal charge, because who will pay the rent if you get taken into custody, right? And so people think, well, they'll go to the shelters or the tiny home stuff of that nature. You know, those places receive grant funding that generally says, you know, no one who's accused with X, Y, or Z. And even if they don't, the people who run them off and screen individuals thought out of fear that, you know, what if this person assaults a staff member or fellow resident? You know, I don't want to get sued. And so, you know, a lot of times my clients end up living on the street for lack of a clear alternative. And that disproportionately impacts people in District 3, because we're a disproportionately policed section of the city. So I think one thing that the city could do is create a program that tells landlords, look, if you take a risk on this guy who hasn't been convicted of anything yet and he does go to jail, we'll pay the rent while you go through the unlawful detainer action. That way, the landlord isn't facing any risk. My clients can focus on their underlying issues instead of where they're going to sleep at night, and we'd have some more accountability with how this money's being spent.
Thank you. And now Jamaica Scott.
So, do you mind repeating the question for me, actually, just so I can make sure I'm getting it?
Oh, absolutely. How do you see the conditions and solutions for homelessness different in District 3 than other parts of the city?
Yeah, so I think in a lot of ways, you know, the, because of the tension of things, you know, the pressure, this crisis of homelessness that we're experiencing, it is felt all over the community. I think what's unique to District 3 is that traditionally District 3, you know, it includes those historically working-class, lower-income, rent-burdened neighborhoods. And people like, these are, these are the parts of the town where people who are looking for starter homes, people who are on fixed incomes, people who are on lower incomes are looking to move to as prices continue to go up, but our wages aren't matching that. People are being pushed out and they're being pushed south. They're still being pushed south. And south is still in District 3, a lot of it. And so then they're also being pushed out further to where there are even less resources than they had when they were here. There are also people who are pushed out and displaced who don't have the resources to find another place further south. So they just stay where they know. They stay near the services. They stay near the cultural and historical place that they've always lived in. And so we're seeing a lot of people who are new to this area struggling, but we're also seeing people who have historically been here that are currently experiencing homelessness, struggling. So we're seeing multiple sides of that spectrum, all kind of hitting in the central location of our city. And the solutions are going to be similar to what's happening. I just think that as we're looking at how we prioritize and we might have to look a little harder in District 3.
Thank you. And Jamaica Scott, you'll be first on this next question. One year ago, Tacoma implemented a camping ban as part of its approach to addressing homelessness. Could you please share your stance on this camping ban? Do you believe it has been effective in addressing homelessness in the city? If not, what alternative strategies or policies would you propose to address homelessness in Tacoma?
I am not a fan of the camping ban. I showed up to council quite a few times to speak out against it. I don't think when we do not have the resources in place for people to choose to take advantage of, that we can't condemn them to having to be, to be pushed around and moved from place to place and kind of be obscured and pushed aside by society in a lot of ways. So, and I think that this camping ban has, you know, maybe in some ways, for the people that it was aimed to actually impact are the people who are living in that radius around the shelters. Maybe it has impacted them, but the issue has still remained the same in other places. And I think that all this camping ban has done is now give people something to latch on to when they feel as though they have a space to protect. I saw a woman who, you know, she had set up a tent and put a little awning over it because it was about to snow. And the next day, there were just people who, citing the camping ban, said she couldn't be there and they showed up. They pulled all of her stuff out of her tent. They're throwing in trash cans, throwing in the back of her truck. And nobody did anything about it. Police were called and, but there was nothing to do. Then that woman moved along. We couldn't find her. We couldn't ask what was, what she needed, how we could connect her to services, what she lost, and how we could help replace it. So it's, I think that it's created a lot of new issues while also not solving our original problem. And I didn't really get into the alternatives, but I know that I'm running out of time. So hopefully I'll have time to talk about that later.
Thank you. And Chris Van Vekton, the same question.
Could you repeat the question for me? I apologize.
Absolutely. One year ago, Tacoma implemented a camping ban as part of its approach to addressing homelessness. Could you please share your stance on this camping ban? Do you believe it has been effective in addressing homelessness in the city? If not, what alternative strategies or policies would you propose to address homelessness in Tacoma?
I wasn't a full fan of the camping ban when it was proposed. I proposed an alternative idea to the city, you know. My perspective is somewhat different from my opponent, because I represent a lot of people who are in this situation and I see a lot of things that happen to them in the camps. Like, I've lost track of how many clients of mine have set themselves on fire in these camps. How many have been hit by cars stumbling into the street at night? How many have overdosed, have been the victims of severe violence? And I believe that the government not only has the power, but the responsibility to regulate how the public behaves in public spaces. The theory behind the camping ban, and this is what has to be understood, a very large percentage, in fact, according to some studies, half of the people who are living in these encampments came out of the foster care system. So they don't have family to fall back on. They don't have a clear sense necessarily of what family is, or at least not within the traditional sense. And so these tents, communities become their family. They become their identity. And so when we're asking people to leave homelessness and homeless culture, we're asking them to change their identity and walk away from everything they know. And it's very hard to do that when all these things that trigger you from your past life are around you. So the theory was, was that if you create these, you know, these barriers effectively between those who are in supervised living conditions and those who are trying to move beyond homelessness versus those who elected to continue, you know, in this life, you know, that will help some people move beyond. And whether or not that percentage of people who went into, you know, services, whatnot, whether or not they're graduating into independence and whatnot, I would have to look at the numbers on that. But in terms of the broader question, has this ended homelessness in Tacoma? Of course not. And that's why we need to have solutions for this opportunity for all and accountability from all, as opposed to just pushing people around.
Thank you. And Chris Van Vekton, you'll be first for the next question as well. How will you incentivize the development of affordable housing units in Tacoma, especially in areas where housing costs are rising rapidly? Are there specific zoning changes or financial incentives you would champion?
Yes, well, I think that we have updated our zoning to increase density, which I think is a good thing. I think that we have to go at a measured pace to allow people to adjust. And as my opponent and others have pointed out, you know, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. So just because we changed the zoning laws doesn't mean that we're going to get a million new housing units just because we changed the law. Just because you changed the law doesn't mean you change outcomes for people. We need to be realistic here. So I do think we are going at the right pace in terms of updating our ordinances and our zonings to make things possible. But again, it does take more time. You know, I've met a lot of people on the campaign trail who are, for lack of another way of saying it, good Samaritans. They've taken people into their homes who were living on the street or were close to living on the street and incurred significant financial hardships to do so. But the city's taxing system and the state's taxing system doesn't seem to recognize that. And so, you know, creating something perhaps in the way of a tax rebate, if you're willing to take additional people into your house to, you know, make housing more affordable for them, I think is something that I'd like to get behind. One thing that you may not be aware of, but in 1965, only 1 in 33 people my age would have lived alone. Now it's 1 in 7. There's been a significant decline in people living with people. And it's very expensive. Housing by default becomes expensive if we don't have roommates and if we're spending a lot more time in a multi-bedroom house alone. So one way that perhaps we could push back against that trend is if we incentivize people to take roommates. And I think our tax system is one way to do so.
Thank you. And Jamaica Scott, the same question.
Yeah, I think that we definitely need to be considering how we continue to build for density. And in doing so, how do we continue to make our neighborhoods desirable for folks? And I think that that's just going to be one of the biggest pieces, is to continue to build that missing middle housing and make sure that, you know, not everything is these big, you know, lofty spaces that continue our sprawl and our environmental damage, but also just aren't getting filled up, because people certainly just don't have the funds to do it. I think that we can look at incentivizing affordability, you know. And if people are willing to develop, if we are putting it as a priority for us to make sure that units that are being developed, that a bigger portion of them are at an affordable rate, a truly affordable rate, not necessarily just an AMI. If people are willing to put, you know, commit to more affordable rate units in their apartments, then we can incentivize them on the building side. I'd also, I also think that we should be looking into a vacancy tax. Sometimes houses just sit on the market, waiting for the highest person, the highest bidder to come along. And not just when you're buying, but also in rental properties. So I think that a vacancy tax could also work to getting people to consider, hey, maybe this is just too high of a price and I need to lower it for folks.
Thank you. And you'll be first on this next question. How will you improve the availability and accessibility of support services for individuals experiencing homelessness, including mental health services, addiction treatment, and emergency shelters?
Yeah, I think that we need to be looking at, you know, there's a lot of work that's being done in the community. A lot of it's being done from a community side of things, whether that's community organizations, grassroots organizations, you know, people who aren't 501(c)(3)'s, they're just affinity groups who come together and want to serve the community in a certain way. And so looking at how we can connect all of these pieces that are already doing the work. When I was, when I worked in domestic violence advocacy, one of the first things that we would do when a client comes in is a safety plan. And so I think that we need to be building out our community's safety, our comprehensive safety plan. Right now, our safety plan, you know, for a long time has just been call 911. And it's starting to expand. We have the HOPE team. We have our community safety officers that the city is launching. But we also need to look into, how do we get social workers into the mix? The public library, they just, you know, put up a job listing for a social worker. So I think really bringing in these agencies that are already doing the work, that are already doing this frontline work, that are seeing the people when they're struggling, while they're struggling, that these are the places that they're already coming to for help, looking at how we can supplement the work that they're doing, whether that is through funds or through, you know, discounts on spaces, whatever that might be. But looking at how do we get creative about building out our city's support system so that we're not overloading any one city service, whether that be our police or our mental health services or our education services or our workforce services, whatever it is, and looking to make that more equitable across the line.
Thank you. And Chris Van Vekton, same question.
And the question was, what are we going to do to increase mental health, addiction, and emergency shelter services? Was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mental health. Well, this is a huge problem. The need has never been greater and we've had extreme burnout in the mental health profession ever since the pandemic began. We've also seen a large percentage of people in this field segue into remote mental health counselors. And in my experience working with the population that I do, I'm not a big believer that you can achieve much from behind a computer screen to assist someone who is in that level of, you know, of need. My people are people. They're not pixels and they are difficult to help under the best of circumstances, but I think it's almost impossible from behind a screen. So, you know, plus, my clients tend to also struggle with phone stability, particularly those living in the camps. So making counselors available to in-person services again is, I believe, a big priority. And the way we're going to do that is if we can make it financially desirable to do that work, because this is hard work. I don't want to, you know, diminish that by any stretch of the imagination. With regard to addiction issues, yeah, I've, you know, when I started in the war on drugs in 2010, meth around here was $5 a hit, OxyContin was $20 a pill. Last year, I was defending a dealer out of Lakewood who was selling fentanyl for $0.25 a pill. I've never seen drugs this cheap, this available, and this destructive to my clients. The biggest thing I believe we need to do is we need to increase access to buprenorphine and suboxone. But 60% of pharmacies across America don't carry it, and we always have a shortage of that here. 99% of people who take advantage of this through medically assisted treatment are able to deal with the side effects of it. And it can do a lot to save people's life, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, sobriety is more of a direction than a destination. It's not enough to just, you know, get sobered or detoxed. You need to make the commitment every single day to move forward. And that's why you need to have counseling services tied into it. And I seem out of time. I apologize.
Thank you. And you will be first on this next question, which is discrimination in housing can exacerbate the housing crisis. What steps will you take to combat housing discrimination, promote fair housing practices, and ensure equitable access to housing for all residents?
Being involved in the criminal justice system, for me, the biggest concern has always been, how do we get people housed who have criminal records? And how do we get people housed who have pending criminal charges? Because as I said in an earlier, you know, earlier question, it's very difficult when you have an individual who has a pending criminal charge to convince a landlord to take them into the house, because who will pay the rent if they get taken into custody? For me, the solution is the city has to assume some responsibility in that scenario for if something happens to that individual tenant to ensure that the landlord is indemnified so that they're willing to take the risk. There are times when, however, this is going to be very difficult. I met a lady the other day who was living in a car and she's working full-time for $18 an hour. And the reason she's in this situation is because in 2019, she was pregnant and her boyfriend wouldn't stop beating her. And the end result of that was that she ended up losing the child at six months into the pregnancy. And when that happened, she lost her mind and set fire to the house that she and her boyfriend were living in. They both emerged unscathed, but she went to prison for 14 months thereafter with arson on her record. And it's very difficult to find either a public or private option for someone who has on their record that they burned down a rental house. So there are scenarios where it's going to be very difficult. Beyond that, you know, we need to get better in enforcement. We have some good anti-discrimination laws on the books right now. But a lot of this... But a lot of discrimination goes on because there just isn't much enforcement. And it's very difficult to determine whether or not someone is actually being discriminated against or just there's some other reason why they didn't get the house on an individual case-by-case basis. Um, but I do think that we, you know, it's not enough to pass a law if we don't have an enforcement mechanism. And I don't think we have great ones here in Tacoma.
Thank you. And Jamaica Scott, the same question.
Yeah, I think we have to definitely look at what, um, protections we're giving tenants to actually push back. A lot of people are, are fearful, you know, if they speak up and say, you, sometimes there's discrimination prior to somebody getting the home. Um, I know that there were times, you know, we had discrimination came in, uh, when I was younger. My mom, you know, a neighbor, um, had seen the police called to our house one time. And after that, the, a neighbor who thought that we were bad for the block called our landlord who heard that and we had an eviction notice on our door. Um, you know, and, and we didn't have any, any real way to push back against any of it. And so looking into how do we make sure that there are avenues for tenants who feel they're being discriminated against, um, to, to take, but also, again, uh, you know, and I, I have to agree with what Chris said. There are certain protections that we already have in place. Um, but none of them, none of them do any good if there's no enforcement. You know, redlining has been a thing that's happened for a long time. We know the history of it. It still happens today, um, and there, but there's nothing to be done about it. We've seen studies of people who, who go in, uh, you know, they're like, I'm, I'm renting as a black person, and then they send their white friend to rent the same place and they're told different rates and everything like that. So it's about how do we enforce it? How do we catch it? How do we empower people, uh, to be able to speak out against it without fear of, uh, repercussions, of losing their housing, of being denied further housing? Um, and so we really have to take a look at the system in that case.
Thank you. And for our next question, um, and Jamaica, you will be first on this one. Tacoma has invested in affordable housing through general funding and sales tax increases. Would you support similar funding mechanisms in the future? And how would you ensure that any funding is effectively and equitably allocated?
Yeah, I'm always hesitant to just say yes, more taxes, because we live in a place where our tax code is really regressive. And, um, as somebody who is, uh, you know, always straddling that poverty line, I, I really feel it around tax time. So, um, and I, you know, and I really feel it when I'm buying things, making purchases and so on, paying my tabs, all those stuff. So it's, uh, so I'm always a little hesitant to try to put anything to tax. I, I'd rather look at our budget and figure out how we can rework things. I'd rather look at new and innovative ways to bring in revenue to the city that we can then use for the things we need. Um, I feel like there's a part of the, the second part of this question I might be forgetting. But, uh, but yeah, so I, I, I think that it's, I would like to make sure that anything that we do, um, especially if it's going to be coming from tax dollars is spent. So I think a lot of it is spent well. So I think a lot of it has to do with bringing in like lived experience. Um, making sure that we are, you know, not just considering the landlord lobby when we are, when we're coming up with, uh, policy, um, and incentive programs and so on, but we're actually talking to the people that our policies and our programs are going to most heavily impact, the ones that, uh, discrimination such as redlining, such as anti-LGBTQ, um, such as, you know, criminal history. What are, what are our most marginalized people facing? What are the people who are most at risk of homelessness? What are the people who are currently experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity and being rent burdened? What are those people experiencing? How do we start addressing it? Um, and how do we, how do we do so in a way that's, that's equitable? And I think that's by bringing in the community to make sure that have a voice in the, in the process.
Thank you. And Chris Van Vecten, the same question.
Yeah, Jamaica and I have very similar views when it comes to taxes. Um, Washington's tax system is extremely regressive and it is, you know, extremely problematic because as a progressive individual, we always, uh, associate, um, solving problems with more, um, funding, with more services. And unfortunately, the only way to do that is by taxing more poor people through what we have the highest sales tax in America here. Our property taxes are difficult. So in the process of, you know, trying to make things more affordable here, we always raise property taxes. I'm paying twelve and a half percent more now on my monthly mortgage than I was at the start of this year because of services that I did vote for. But it does make the issue of making it affordable to live here difficult, um, you know, given the systems we have in place. Um, in terms of equitable distribution of funding, um, my, my belief is that, um, through what I've done professionally, um, you know, I've, 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 you know, eighty-five to ninety-one percent of the people who come to the criminal justice system are found to be indigent, which in Tacoma means they make two thousand bucks a month or less. And I've been to their neighborhoods, I've been to their homes, I've been to their trailers, I've been to their tents. These are places that are defined by having the best of the worst of things and the worst of the best of things. And that includes access to housing. And so front of, to my mind, I've never been quite sure or never fully understood why the city spends so much on studies and equity mapping and stuff of that nature and consultants to figure out where these disparities are when the police seem to have no trouble without these experts. To my mind, if you see that there's pockets at the city where more people are getting arrested, that's where more investment needs to be made. That's where you will see equity. So when we come to affordable housing and needs at the places where people are getting arrested is where the investment needs to be made.
Thank you. And you'll be first on this next question. Accurate data is crucial for addressing homelessness. How will you work to improve data collection and reporting on homelessness in Tacoma to inform policy decisions and track progress in reducing homelessness?
Yes, this is a big concern for me because right now I'm representing people who not only come from all over the county and all over the state, but all over America. And, um, you know, they, they self-report to us their previous diagnoses, they self-report to us how they landed in this situation. We don't follow up, we don't have the money or the resources, the time to do so. And I sometimes find that I, my clients are telling me what they think I want to hear rather than what actually happened. And then that undermines my ability and other people who are similarly dedicated to helping them get out of this, um, you know, more effectively move forward. In my ideal world, we would have a, at the very least, regional data system where we, because right now, if you're homeless in Seattle and you move down to Tacoma, your, your file doesn't necessarily transfer with you. They could just close one file in Seattle and open one in Tacoma. In my ideal world, we would have a system in place that would be very portable so that we could have caseworkers just go out to the camps, um, with iPads, use fingerprint identification technology, the same thing that, uh, you have on your cell phone to unlock your phone. The reason for that being is that my, my clients tend to lose their IDs and this would be a way to be able to open files directly. And just, you know, do a fingerprint check and say, okay, this is Jason. Uh, Jason has an aunt who lives in Lakewood. Uh, she says he can come live with her if he first does thirty days of detox. Jason, why hasn't this happened? You know, being able to, uh, tell the difference between a systemic failure and an excuse. But that requires having communities all on board to collect data, to share data, and to have similar policies with regard to homelessness. And even in Pierce County, we have cities with radically different views on this crisis. And they are putting, uh, out radically different policies, which are unfortunately undermining Tacoma's ability to address the issue.
Thank you. And Jamaica Scott, same question.
Yeah, I think data is important. Uh, I think we also have to consider the fact that, you know, for a lot of people, especially marginalized community, like data has been used, uh, against us in a lot of ways. It's been used to harm us. Um, it's been used to validate how, like, you know, inappropriate studies being done and, um, and inappropriate, you know, medical procedures and, and, and so on. Uh, so I, I think that, you know, we have to be careful about how we do it. If, in, and especially working in populations where people are, uh, mentally ill, um, where people are struggling, especially if, you know, they are survivors of domestic violence, things like that. Uh, the fear that data can be used to track you, trace you is real. Um, or, you know, and so I, I think that making sure, um, not only that we are communicating throughout the region with various partners, um, especially from, you know, especially within the county, but the, with our neighboring counties that we know that we are often seeing people coming into Tacoma from. Um, but looking at how do we collect that data equitably? How do we ensure people that, um, that this is informational and it's informational with the intention to help you? And it's not, um, it's not going to be used against you in any, it, in, in any way. So, um, you know, I, I, I could go into some other stories about that. But, uh, knowing that I just have a few more seconds left, I'll say that, yeah, that, I think that's the biggest thing, that yes, and the more we are aware, the better we can serve. Uh, but we have to be careful about how we are collecting that information, um, and how we are building trust to, uh, for the community to allow that, that information to be collected. Um, and not to, you know, feel as though when they say something that it's going to be brought back upon them.
Thank you. And you'll be first for this next question. Collaboration with community organizations and nonprofits is vital in addressing the shortage of affordable housing and homelessness. How will you foster partnerships with local organizations to enhance homelessness prevention and support efforts to provide more affordable housing throughout the city?
You said I'm first on this one, right? Yes, okay. Um, so I, yeah, this, I love questions like this because I, I love this. Like being able to move throughout a community, see who's doing. I've been playing a lot of like free cell when I have to sit and wait for things. So it's like a solitaire game. Um, and I often think about how that's a community. You have a whole mass of cars that are just kind of there and they're not really where they need to be. And you kind of need to mess things up even more before you kind of get everything in a place where it all falls in line. Um, and so it feels, it's a little bit like that. It's, it's weaving through the mix of, of all the different, um, you know, suits and colors and shades and everything like that. Uh, seeing what to like, seeing where the differences are, seeing how those differences strengthen us, um, seeing how we can support, um, you know, the various ends of the pieces to, to get pieces in place to fall in line. That was kind of a, you know, I'm letting my writer come in and, and all my analogies and all that. But, um, but I think that that's a big thing and that's, that's kind of how I move through the community already is, uh, looking, again, how do we bring people together? How do we, uh, consolidate our resources, not to lessen them, but to, um, to shore them up and strengthen them so that they can have a broader impact? Um, not only for the community, but it has a deeper impact on the people who are serving the community because it's allowing them to come together with people who are also doing the work. And, um, we all know the phrase that many hands make the work light. And so I, you know, navigating community systems, resource navigation, bringing people together, figuring out how we can collaborate. Um, I, and all the work that I do, whether that's youth and family work, community organizing work, or my film-making work, collaboration, bringing people together for, um, a, a single purpose is, is one of my favorite things to do.
Thank you. And Chris Van Vecten, the same question.
Well, I think it begins with, you know, bringing stakeholders together from the get-go when planning out policies, you know, rather than having one vested interest group, whether it be the landlords or the renters or something of that nature, come up with an idea and then have the other side react to it. For example, if we can ever get everyone on the same page on the get-go, we can make sure that this gets done right and that it achieves mutual aims and, and goals and make things better. But more broadly, we, uh, as a city, need to, uh, do better outreach with some of our neighboring communities. You know, um, about two months or so ago, I represented a homeless man in Gig Harbor who was arrested for eating out of a trash can behind the gourmet burger. And the reason he was arrested was because he trespassed against the gourmet burger by eating out of their trash can, their dumpster without, without their permission. That's not only a waste of resources, that's not only, um, um, an injustice in itself. What that is, is that's the Gig Harbor Police Department implementing Gig Harbor's own homeless policy, which is to basically drive the homeless, um, into, uh, Tacoma. And so whatever we achieve or with regard to policies here is undermined by the fact that we are, um, taking people, um, from other communities here because of our, um, because of the policies that exist elsewhere, not just in America, but in this community. So getting a regional approach to homelessness, um, getting regional approaches to affordable housing is going to make our ultimate goals, uh, more effective. And that requires not just, uh, strategizing at the local level, but more broadly speaking, without, throughout the county and through the state to make sure that we're all on the same page, rather than throwing, you know, people into one city or another because they don't have a plan.
Thank you. And, um, you will be first, Chris Van Vecten, for the next question as well. Uh, how do you plan to engage with the community to gather input on affordable housing and homelessness policies? And how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the implementation of these policies?
Well, I'm a big fan of, uh, you know, mail surveys, stuff of that nature where people can, um, you know, submit back i- i- into queries. I think the city has done a pretty good job, um, in some respects of, of, um, you know, they, they do video record study sessions, they do video record, um, uh, city council meetings, they video record boards and, uh, commissions um, that are related to this issue. But I don't think that the general public has the ability, um, or the bandwidth to take advantage of this. And I think that the only way we can get the input of the, uh, broader population who really needs to be heard in all this is when we do, um, direct contact. So, um, that can mean, um, sending out direct surveys. It can mean mail pieces advising them of what steps the city has taken. I've always been a fan of, uh, our school board and how they send out a, uh, you know, a, a newsletter, uh, multi-page newsletter about what they're doing with our tax dollars. I've, um, kind of been disappointed by that, that the city of Tacoma doesn't take similar steps. Um, you know, um, we can, um, in the worst case scenario, we could, we could have people go out doorbelling and basically asking people, um, on a direct level, how they feel about these policies and what, what they're actually doing to see if we can get, um, uh, more input. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I, I don't think that there's a, um, I think that the community needs to have a clear definition of what accountability and transparency is, uh, before we can actually achieve a goal, because it means different things to different people. And I think if we get on the same page as what, what we mean about accountability, uh, in particular, um, then we can start moving the needle. But we've got to get these, um, basic definitions set.
Thank you. And Jamaica Scott, same question.
Um, yeah, so I, again, I, I love getting, I, I don't like to know all the answers, so meeting with people, talking to them, hearing, uh, what's happening in the community. Um, you know, that I, I'd much rather hear from people what their fears are, their hopes are, their desires are, their needs are than, than try to guess. So, um, you know, one of the biggest things I've always done, what I've done during my campaign and, and what I plan to continue to do is just to create as many avenues as possible to, uh, be in touch with the community and, and, and make sure that I'm engaged. Um, you know, I am not as close to my struggle as I once was, because if I was, I wouldn't have the capacity to run for office now. Um, but I still have my issues, but I think, you know, as we all want for ourselves, as we move towards like comfortability and, and living unbothered. Um, you know, we hope to be further out of touch with, with the struggle. Um, and that's okay, but we can't forget the people who are still struggling and we can't, um, allow our, our comfortability to, to blind us to that. And the, the best way to do that is to remain in touch with the community. Um, and I think that that's also the answer to, um, you know, the transparency and accountability portion. Uh, if you have, you know, built-in authentic ways of communicating in earnest with the community, whether that, you know, and, and making sure that there's a broad ways to do that, to, uh, make sure that we're meeting people, you know, if they can't come to a city council meeting, they can, uh, do a survey online. If they can't do it online, they can drop by the coffee shop, whatever it is. But finding a, a myriad of ways to make sure that people can be in touch, that people are aware of whatever process is happening, that they can, um, uh, chime in. And yeah, I think that that's gonna, that'll definitely help increase that transparency, which will allow us to maintain accountability.
Thank you. And that was our final question. So now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate has up to one minute for a closing statement. We will reverse the order of the opening statements. And so we will begin with Chris Van Vecten. Your closing statement, please.
Well, thank you, uh, for holding this, um, uh, this forum. I think that, um, you know, housing is probably, well, how, I know, having talked to over, um, over sixteen hundred people at the door now, I think that, um, you know, along with public safety and homelessness, housing affordability is the top issue in Tacoma this year. So I'm glad that we had a forum dedicated to both homelessness and housing affordability. Um, in my, um, career as a public defender, I've represented over eleven hundred people in crisis. And it's taught me that, um, personal failures don't define personal futures. Um, in my career as a, a business owner in Tacoma here, which, um, somehow survived the, the, uh, the pandemic in twenty twenty, uh, I've learned that the path of least resistance is often the road to nowhere. I think that, um, you know, these issues that we're dealing with as a community here are going to be, uh, requiring collaboration. Uh, they're going to require, um, how do I say this? They're going to require determination and they're going to require, uh, frontline experience. And I think that as, um, someone who has represented, uh, those who struggle the most in the city, I would be able those who struggle the most in the city, I would be able to bring that to the city council, and I would appreciate your support.
Thank you. And next, Jamaica Scott, your closing statement, please.
Thank you again to the Affordable Housing Consortium, as well as League of Women Voters for having us here and for moderating. I really appreciate it. And, you know, again, I'm I'm Jamaica. I'm running for District Three on the City Council here in Tacoma. And I am really looking forward to continuing to be a megaphone again for the people's voices and bringing them with me with me behind the dais as we work to address our city's most pressing issues. Not by playing whack-a-mole with with the city's needs, but actually sitting down in earnest, taking a good assessment of of our policies and our practices and and our our culture of of government here and doing the work to critique ourselves, but also as as a government, but also to come together with the community to solve the issues, because I truly believe that just as many problems we have out there, we have as many answers right here in this community, and I'm looking forward to bringing them to the table as a city council member. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I would like to thank both candidates who joined us tonight, Jamaica Scott and Chris Van Vecten. Thank you to the Affordable Housing Consortium for co-sponsoring this forum and to our community co-sponsors, the Summit Waller Community Association, the N double A C P Tacoma Branch, Latinx Unidos of the South Sound, the Tacoma and Puaylo Valley Branches of the AAUW, and the Tacoma Urban League. You can see this and other candidate forums on our League of Women Voters website at For viewers, please be sure to vote for the candidates of your choice before Election Day, November seventh. Please mail or use a Dropbox to deliver your ballot as early as possible. Thank you also to our timekeeper, Susan Idenschink, and to Cynthia Stewart, our Zoom master, and to the committee who planned this forum. Be sure to read your voter's pamphlet and look up vote four one one dot org, where you can find answers to questions posed to the candidates and do all you can to be an educated voter. Thank you for watching and have a good evening, and don't forget to vote.